The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Aldenberg. Alderman Kohn. Alderman Orion. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Brownie. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
President.
Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. And Alderwoman Boyd. A present, you have corn.
A corn being present, we will be led in opening reflection by Executive Director of St. Louis Public Library, Waller McGuire.
Thank you, President Green. It is an honor to lead the St. Louis Public Library, one of the great historic libraries of the United States. And thank you for the further honor of being here today.
Shout out to him.
I believe that public libraries are one of the great ideas of democracy. They are the envy of the world. They are a powerful force for it. They exist because of the support of citizens and of local government. I think the library knows something of what you face every day. We know what it is to face needing to accomplish many things with limited resources, needing to represent and negotiate between very different points of view and beliefs, and having people come to us with all sorts of different needs, needs we didn't learn about or expect, and needing our help. We thank you for what you accomplished in that important work. We're grateful for your service. We at the St. Louis Public Library are proud and grateful to work in a city that knows and supports the strength of diversity, that wants its children to grow up with choice and pride, that believes that citizens should think and choose for themselves. I did bring a book, perhaps an unexpected one, and I'll read a short quote from it. I played tennis when I was young, a long, long time ago, and read Andre Agassi's autobiography because of that, but it is a remarkable book. And like all good books, I learned unexpected things from it. Agassi led an extraordinary life and a very fortunate one, but it wasn't an easy one. And he regrets a great deal of what he missed, learning and reading in school because of those thousands and thousands of hours spent practicing. He felt this so deeply that when he retired, he founded a college preparatory school meant to help students who'd faced their own kinds of challenges. I still remember the first time I read the last words of this book, which moved me as a librarian and as a reader. And I offer them to you. This book was written for them, but also to them. I hope it helps them avoid some of the traps I walked right into. More, I hope it will be one of the many books that give them comfort, guidance, and pleasure. I was late in discovering the magic of books. Of the many mistakes that I want my children to avoid, I put that one at the top of the list. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I hope your day and your important work goes well.
And at this time, I would like to invite up CEO of Lydia's House, Karen Kirk. For one more reflection, if you could, please remain standing.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. I'm here just a little bit early to kick off October Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Lydia's House, I'm from Lydia's House, and Lydia's House provides domestic violence survivors and their children a safe place to heal, a voice for justice, and the opportunity for better and sustainable lives. We provide two years of transitional housing here in St. Louis City and St. Louis County, and we provide all the needed resources for survivors and their children at no cost to victims. Since the agency's inception thirty years ago, close to 1,350 women and their children have been served and received services from Lydia's House, making us the largest transitional housing program in the country. One in four women and one in seven men will be affected by domestic violence in their lifetime. Every nine seconds, a woman is hit or beaten in our country. Three women in our country lose their lives every single day. In one day, 20,000 phone calls were made to domestic violence hotlines in the country. In Missouri, 70,000 calls came in. That's 192 calls a day that we receive. Thirty thousand incidents are reported, but it's also one of the most underreported crimes there is. Truly, many don't survive this. Domestic violence is a pervasive issue that affects individuals all across all demographics, often leaving psychological and physical scars. It encompasses various forms of abuse, physical, emotional, psychological, and financial, and has lasting impacts on our families and our own community. Reflecting on domestic violence highlights the urgent need for awareness and education. Many victims feel trapped due to fear, stigma, or financial dependency, making it crucial to have supportive environments like Lydia's House. Communities must foster open dialogues about healthy relationships and provide reasons and resources to those in need. Moreover, addressing systemic issues such as inadequate legal protections and societal norms that perpetuate the violence can help these reoccurrences. Advocacy and support systems play a vital role empowering victims' recovery. Ultimately, ending domestic violence requires collective action, understanding, compassion, and ensuring everyone has a safe place to call home. The challenge for all of us is to do what we can do to help end domestic violence. We can meet that challenge by education and by hope. For the truth is that people commit domestic violence, and it's people like us that can help to stop it. That is all of us making efforts to end domestic violence in our community. Lydia's House will have the potential to save more lives with your help, more potential to stop the violence, and more potential to create more opportunities for victims and their children living in fear and danger every single day. By its very nature, your work and your commitment to address domestic violence is an ethical endeavor that will help St. Louis further justice. We need your help. As we enter Domestic Violence Awareness Month this coming October, we hope you will all engage in the activities that are planned around our great city. If you know someone who needs help, please call 1-800-799-SAFE. If you see someone in the parking lot and they need help, it's 1-800-799-SAFE. Everyone deserves a safe place to go home. Thank you so much.
We will dispense with line item for any introduction of honored guests. Alderwoman.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I could not wait to get here today to say my honored guest is my new grandbaby, Ami. I am officially Alder Granny now. Seven pounds, nine ounces of love entered our family on Sunday. Ayana, I am so happy and proud of you, my new son, Bobby. I love you. I love you all immeasurably. I cannot wait to meet Ami and hold her in my arms. Thank you, God, Alder Granny, to check the, say for real. I'm so excited. And then, I don't know what school they're from or who these amazing young people are from, U City. I would like to absolutely have as my honored guest, all of you amazing children from U City, please stand. Welcome this morning.
Alderman from the ninth.
Yes, well, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard did already welcome you, but I do want to have as my special guest as well, the New City's fourth graders. If you don't know where New City School is, it's in the central west end at Waterman and Lake. It's a wonderful, wonderful school, and we had the opportunity to greet these students today, have them down on the floor, answer their questions. The president joined us, Alderwoman Switzer joined us, Alderman Aldenberg joined us, and it was just a wonderful time. Really appreciate all your questions, and we're honored to have you here today.
Alderman from the fourteenth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Today as my honored guest, I would like to have the Democratic nominee, Alfred Montgomery, Sheriff of the, future Sheriff of the City of St. Louis. Today is his birthday, so if we all can wish him a happy birthday today. As well as I see, we have some amazing guests here on the floor, so I would also love to have the comptroller, comptroller of the City of St. Louis, Ms. Darlene Green, as well as our mayor, Tashara Jones, here, our honored guest today. So, thank you.
Alderman from the third.
There we go. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. It is a privilege and a pleasure to have these wonderful fourth graders from New City School in our balcony this morning. I also had the pleasure of speaking with them briefly. Always such a joy to see such engaged young people in our community. I told some folks on my way out of the mayor's office that they were asking some really hard-hitting questions, some really important questions about trans lives, Black Lives Matter, and what we're doing as a city to uplift our communities here. So, I really very much appreciate the education that these young people are getting by coming down here to City Hall. I too would like to recognize the mayor and the comptroller as my honored guest this morning. I have been an alderman for sixteen years, and this is the first time that I've been in the presence of both of the chamber at the same time. So, this is looking like it might be a pretty exciting meeting this morning. So, thank you all for your time this morning and look forward to working with you all in our community.
Alderman from the second.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I also would like to welcome and have as my special honored guest the fourth grade class from New City School. It is so awesome to have you all take an interest in local government. Welcome to City Hall. Keep that interest, please, as you engage and go forward in your education. I also want to have a special guest who's a member of that class, a dear friend of mine, Winnie Ratley. Thank you. You are my special guest today at the St. Louis Board of Aldermen.
Alderwoman from the seventh.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I'm going to be redundant. I feel like as the youngest alder, I have a responsibility to make sure that I greet you all. So, I just want to thank you all. Also recognize Ms. Robinson, who I'm sure had a lot to do from the mayor's office with coordinating this visit. Anytime you all want to come back, even if one of you all want to join me, make sure you let us know. We love young visitors. We love hard-hitting questions. And hopefully today you get to see us ask some hard-hitting questions. And I also want to have comptroller Green and Mayor Jones as my special honored guest as well. Thank you.
Any further introduction of honored guests? Any further introduction of honored guests? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the tenth. You are recognized on the minutes from Friday, September 20th, 2024.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we approve the minutes from Friday, September 20th, 2024.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the fifth, that we approve the minutes from Friday, September 20th, 2024. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Google Drive for your review. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for a.
Clerk, we're going to first go with Madam Mayor and Madam Comptroller before we get into our nominations for today.
So noted.
At this point in time, we do have two very special guests with us today, comptroller Green and Mayor Jones, who have both asked to address us today. Comptroller Green asked first, and so I'm going to first open it up to her for, you know, welcome to the Board, Madam Comptroller, and please, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President and members of the board, I rise today to share with this honorable board a matter of great urgency to the taxpayers of the City of St. Louis. This is about protecting tax dollars. This is about protecting federal monies coming to the City of St. Louis. Two weeks ago, I sent a letter to Neil Richardson of SLDC to express my deep concerns about the integrity of the process for ARPA Fund grants. In the letter, I urged Richardson to remove all doubts concerning the integrity of the process, to fix any problems, and to address the appearance of improprieties and lack of transparencies. I asked him to reveal the details of how the final grant selections were determined in light of the flawed process. On Tuesday, during the Board's HUDs Committee meeting, Richardson and his staff admitted the selection process was flawed. They admitted mistakes were made and that there was, there was an appearance of improprieties and a lack of transparency. They admitted the flawed selection committee process was subjective and the final choices were made by an executive committee of SLDC staff and not the five-member selection committee pursuant to ordinance 64102. At the HUDs Committee meeting, among the SLDC presentation and several automatic questions, SLDC officials provided that they would work to fix the problems, to provide transparency, and to correct the improprieties. As comptroller, I urge SLDC to get it right. While they still have time. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to uplift a long-distressed area of our city and hard-working small business owners in North St. Louis deserve pandemic relief. SLDC must choose to do the right thing in order to restore the public trust. I request my letter be placed in the record. Thank you, Madam President.
No problem. Thank you, Madam Comptroller, for gracing us with your presence today. We also at this time have remarks from Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, if you would like to approach your microphone.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board of Aldermen. Madam Comptroller, good morning. Investing in people and investing in North St. Louis is an unfamiliar road. We have never taken the steps that we are currently taking to correct seven decades, over seventy years, of intentional neglect and intentional disinvestment. Just as choices by previous administrations was intentional not to invest in poor and black neighborhoods, this administration's intention and decision is intentional to invest in poor and black neighborhoods. Because I've said it once, and I'll say it a thousand times, our city can't grow, our city can't succeed if over half of it is left to fail. And over half of our city is a qualified census tract and has been left to fail for decades. I appreciate the comptroller for bringing her concerns, and she's right. Every dollar must be spent by the deadline outlined by the federal government. And every dollar will be spent by the deadlines outlined by the federal government. Part of being accountable is acknowledging mistakes. Was this process perfect? Absolutely not. Is anything that we do in government perfect? Absolutely not. This was a monumental task that SLDC was left to perform in addition to standing up over thirteen new programs, including this one. Investing in people and the businesses of North St. Louis's new territory, and yes, there have been some bumps. The comptroller is right to point them out, and Neil Richardson, the CEO of SLDC, is right to address them. His staff testified for over two hours at the recent HUDs Committee meeting to address those concerns. But what we will not do is let bumps in the process kill this entire program. We will not let perfect be the enemy of good. We have a moral and economic imperative to invest in our city. This isn't the first, this isn't the only time that we will invest in North St. Louis, and it won't be the last. Every time the comptroller has sent us or sent Neil a letter, we have responded within twenty-four hours. And I commend Neil Richardson and his staff for taking on the Herculean task of putting this money out in community. Please know that because these dollars are sitting at SLDC, that is considered obligated and are not subject to the December 31st, 2024 deadline. They are subject to the December 31st, 2026 deadline. And we have every intention on making sure that these dollars are spent with integrity. We will vet every business as we have been doing all along the way. And the process has been delayed because we had to come back and correct the original bill that was passed back in 2022 that had inherent conflicts of interest in the bill. So, that delayed this entire program. But please know that my administration, along with SLDC, has every intention on making sure that these dollars are spent in community and with the businesses they were intended to be spent with. And these businesses will grow. North St. Louis will look totally different in the next five to seven years because of this program and the many others that we're, that we have to invest in North St. Louis and parts of South St. Louis. And we will see that these bumps along the way were just bumps along the way. That this is going to be a transformative program that will lift up many communities, create hundreds of jobs, and make St. Louis the city that we all know it to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Madam Comptroller, for coming today and for your remarks and for always being so open and accessible to members of the Board of Aldermen and our questions. I, you know, also I see Neil Richardson there. Also want to thank you so much for coming in front of HUDs this past week. And, you know, anytime we have questions or concerns, being, you know, answering the phone right away, not hesitating to come in front of us and sometimes have difficult conversations. So, we really appreciate all of you for coming today, for sharing your thoughts with the Board of Aldermen. You are free to stick around for the remainder of the meeting if you want, but, you know, don't feel like you have to if, if you do not want to. But thank you so much for coming to the Board today. If we could give them both a round of applause. Alderwoman from the eighth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. My microphone has been definitely shortened. Thank you to the alderman from the third. Madam President, as the alderman from the third mentioned, I've never been down here where the, both the mayor and the comptroller have been here. I see the comptroller's already left. But my question is, it's my understanding that when the mayor and the comptroller are before us, that they can answer questions from the Board? Is that correct?
They can answer questions.
Okay. In that case, Madam President, I'd like to ask if the mayor would yield to questions from the Alderwoman from, from the eighth.
Madam Mayor, would you yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the eighth?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I do appreciate, I enjoy my colleagues in gratitude for being here this morning. I was unaware that you were coming, but certainly, I think, given the gravity of the situation before us and the questions that the public have related to the SLDC grants, the Northside Grant Program. You mentioned in your opening remarks that, that the original bill that was passed by the Board of Aldermen had inherent conflicts of interest. I'm wondering if you could speak to that, the original bill, whether you signed it and what those, what those conflicts of interest were that were rectified.
Right. The, the original bill was passed under a different president, I will acknowledge that. But it required Aldermen to supply a letter for every business that was going to be considered for the grant program. And that could have slowed grant awarding down significantly if they weren't able to get in contact with their particular alderperson, but also could be open to conflicts of interest as, and, and I'm not accusing anyone on this floor of doing that, but that alders could pick favorites to who would get a grant and who would not, who would get a letter and who would not get a letter.
So, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, the letter situation was the rectifying that was done between the original bill and the second bill? Were there any other, did you sign that original bill? Were there?
I probably did.
Probably did, okay. One of the issues, I mean, you talked a lot about how important and how transformative these funds could and should be for the North side of St. Louis. I agree entirely. I think I've been probably boring my colleagues with the statistics on population loss that we've seen over the last couple of years, uh, last several decades, but it's been especially alarming in the last couple of years where we have seen population numbers, particularly Black St. Louis, plummeting. The population loss in, in our city has been around two, two and a half percent per year over the last couple of years, but in the black population, about four and a half percent for the last couple, according to the latest census, census numbers. And I think it's imperative, as you point out, that we invest in communities to rectify the massive amounts of disinvestment in our community, but it's especially important in North St. Louis. We have to do that with trust. We have to be building trust. And my question is, you know, with this, with this process, what is the role of the Board of Aldermen vetting? And some using and conflicting information in the, in the media with, as it relates to the roles and responsibilities of the SLDC Board, the Board of Aldermen? We at the Board here put together a, a funding package for SLDC, but I'd like, in your words, to describe what our role at the Board of Aldermen and the SLDC's Board is in vetting these businesses, what our specific role is, and making sure that these, that we're building trust and.
Well, I don't believe that the Board of Aldermen has a role in vetting these businesses. It is up to SLDC, as that program was given to SLDC to devise and to implement. The Board of Aldermen also doesn't approve contracts, but you, however, do sit on the SLDC Board as a result of your chairwomanship. And so, it's your responsibility as a member of the SLDC Board to help vet these companies as well. You can ask SLDC at any time for applications or more information, which I know you have done, and, and Neil Richardson has responded to you, but it is not up to the Board of Aldermen. The Board of Aldermen legislates, passes legislation, and then it's up to the administration to then implement that legislation and the, and develop the criteria for judging these applications and vetting the businesses therein.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, and is it your contention or your assertion or direction that the Board of the, the SLDC Board members should be involved in the vetting process of these businesses?
If they choose to be, yes.
Is it their responsibility? Whose responsibility is it to vet these?
It is SLDC's responsibility to vet the business.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do you mean the Board or the staff of SLDC? This is very important, because I do sit on the Board. We meet two hours a month essentially, Board members. And it is imperative to understand where the buck stops. Is it the responsibility of Board members to be going through and driving up to the vacant building owner, buildings and understanding whether or not these are functioning businesses? Or is it the SLDC staff? That's my question.
Uh, it is the responsibility. Uh, it is the responsibility, again, of the SLDC staff through processes that they have outlined to vet the businesses for this program. And if the board chooses to, if you as a board member choose to, then you can do so. Or you can vote present, or you can turn your camera off when it's time for the vote.
Excuse me, I did not turn my camera off. I have an AT&amp;T cellphone service or internet provider, and I have been very clear that the AT&amp;T service that I have, that I subscribe to and pay for was cut off during that time. And that's a, a situation that I could not prevent or even address at the time. But I did vote. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate you at least outlining, you know, where the responsibility was. Because I have to say, as a board member of SLDC and even as a member of the Board of Aldermen, at the end of the day, it's our role really to drive where these funds go, but we cannot be in the business of vetting these things. We have to be able to trust our staff and the millions of dollars we put into the administration, the administrative effort of delivering these funds. This has to be done by professional staff. It cannot be done by Board members. And, and that's just at the end of the day, there's just no time, there's no, to pass the buck onto SLDC Board members. I think it's really going to put us in a very unfortunate...
No one's passing the buck to SLDC Board members. I said if you choose to, then you can vet the application. But SLDC staff are very professional, and they have outlined a process and rubrics and grading, grading sheets to vet every business, to grade every business in this program. Now, as a board member, if you choose to ask for more information, then that is your prerogative.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have done that. I've sent a pretty lengthy set of questions to the SLDC staff. I do appreciate you coming down here. Madam President, thank you for the opportunity to ask questions. And I do, even, you know, with these questions, Madam Mayor, I think, I commend you for coming down this morning and for answering questions of the Board of Aldermen. This is a very important project. These are very, these are large amounts of funds, and it is imperative that we get it right, that we not only invest these in a way that can transform North St. Louis, but that builds trust in city government, badly needed trust, trust that has been badly harmed by, by many years, but certainly by what's been in the media related to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I'm here. Got any more questions?
Seeing none, thank you, Madam Mayor, for coming before us today. We really appreciate...
Thank you.
Right, we will commence with report of city officials.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the Convention and Visitors Commission, the appointment of Christopher Randall. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment, sincerely, to Charla O. Jones, Mayor.
Aldermen from the 14th, you are recognized on Mayor Jones' appointments to the Convention and Visitors Com-
Thank you, Madam Mayor, er, thank you, Madam President. The members of the board, I move to appoint Christopher Randall to the Convention Visitor Commission.
It's been moved by the Aldermen from the 14th, seconded by the Aldermen from the 3rd, that we approve Mayor Jones' appointments to the Convention and Visitors Commission. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
That's the extent of reported city officials.
Does anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendar? Anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendar? Seeing none, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill 105, sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, and ordinance, updating ordinance number 71820, which pertains to the illegal discharge of firearms. To change the term weapon to firearm, change criminal negligence to recklessly, and updating exception to the prohibition and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 106, sponsored by Alderman Oldenburg. This board bill proposes an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing the police commissioner on behalf of the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute a grant agreement with the Missouri Department of Public Safety's Project Safe Neighborhoods 2021 program to fund the training of officers in the gang task force as well as needed supplies for the unit and equipment, which began with 2019 Project Safe Neighborhoods grant, appropriating funds therefore and authorizing the police commissioner or his designees to enter into contracts and expand the funds to extend receive containing severability and emergency clause. That's the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to Committee of Board Bills.
To Public Safety Board Bill 105 and 106.
Second reading and report of standing committees.
The following board bills were reported out of Transportation and Commerce with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 99, sponsored by Alderman Cone, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Pub, the Board of Estment and Apportionment, and the Board of Public Service, authorizing and directing the airport, the Director of Airports and Control of the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute the purchase and sale agree, agreement in the form as set forth, Exhibit A, attached heretofore and incorporated herein between the City and St. Louis County, authorizing the sale of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, property parcel located within the City of Kenlock, Missouri, in St. Louis County for $40,000 containing severability clause. Board Bill 100, sponsored by Alderman Cone, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing the transfer of $1 million from the Airport Development Fund to the Air Service Incentive Program at St. Louis Lambert International Airport for fiscal years 2025 through 2027, providing for supplemental transfers containing severability clause. Board Bill 101, sponsored by Alderman Cone, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estment and Apportionment, providing for financial incentives for airlines and air services at St. Louis Lambert International Airport, containing severability clause. The following board bills were reported out of Health and Human Development with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 84, sponsored by Alderwoman Keys, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and the comptroller of the City of St. Louis to execute a temporary construction easement with certain terms and conditions with Great Rivers Greenway District to allow its equipment workers and materials to install on over and across under the land depicted on Exhibit B within Exhibit 1 for the purpose of constructing, installing a trail, and containing severability clause. Board Bill 98, sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, Alderman Ballmer, Alderwoman Switzer, and Alderwoman Sanye. An ordinance approving an award of $263,800 for the analysis of public health and public equity to the City of St. Louis, Integrated Health Network, authorizing the execution of a grant agreement between the St. Louis City through and by its Department of Health, the St. Louis Integrated Health Network, for the purpose of conducting analysis of the health, safety net network of providers and member organizations, authorizing certain actions by city officials containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of second reading, report and standing committees.
Report of special committees.
We have none.
Board bills for perfection consent.
Board Bill 67, sponsored by Alderman Brownie, pursuant to ordinance number 70333, as amended by ordinance number 71394. An ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic on various blocks in the 9th Ward. Board Bill 78, sponsored by Alderman Brownie, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above-surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian, and pedestrian travel in the western north-south alley in City Block 5043 as bounded by Arco Avenue, Taylor Avenue, Oakland Avenue, Kings Highway Boulevard, and the City of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after describing in accordance with the Charter Authority and in conformity with Section 14 of Article 21 of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill 79, this board bill has been withdrawn by the request of the sponsor. This number will not be used this section. Board Bill 81, as amended, sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer, pursuant to ordinance number 70333, as amended by ordinance number 71394. An ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic on various blocks in the 1st Ward. Board Bill 94, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps, pursuant to ordinance number 70333, as amended by ordinance number 71394, to calm the flow of traffic on the 6100 block of Kingsbury, 300 and the 400 blocks of DePere Avenue, and 1300 block of Bayard Avenue. Board Bill 97, sponsored by Alderman Brownie, an ordinance establishing a stop site at the intersection of Swan and Taylor Avenue, containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of board bills for perfection consent calendar.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the board bills for perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the board bills for perfection consent calendar.
Is there a second? It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 1st, that we adopt the board bill for the perfection consent calendar. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill 65, sponsored by Alderwoman Keys, and the following Alder person: Clark Hubbard, Sanye, Cone, Brownie, Switzer, and Aldridge. An ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated December 13th, 2022, for the Jeff Vanderloo Scattered Sites Redevelopment Area.
Madam Clerk, if you could, given the absence of the bill sponsor, if you could please place...
Point of order, point of order, point of order.
Alderwoman from the 12th, if you could please put your camera on and state your point of order?
I cannot because the host prevented me from turning my video on. I keep getting that message. So whoever has turned my video off, please turn it back on.
Hold on one second.
Now they just did it. Um, my point of order is that the Alderwoman from the 11th asked me to hand her board bill 65 because...
Great, we can proceed with that. We were, we were not notified, so I appreciate that. So Alderwoman from the 12th, you are recognized in the perfection of board bill 65.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move for perfection of board bill 65.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 12th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 10th, that we perfect board bill number 65. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Mr. Madam President, members of the board, board bill 65 is an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated December 13th, 2022, for the Jeff Vanderloo Scattered Sites Redevelopment Area. It is been an ongoing development since the Alderwoman has gotten here. Part of the scattered sites will include the Nick, a commercial building will house a location of the Negro League Baseball Museum. The estimated cost of development is $17.6 million and will allow up to 15 years tax payments, in some places 10 years, based on 90% of the assessed value of the increment, incremental improvements, and followed with five years based on 50% of the assessed value of the incremental improvements.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 8th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I just wanted to acknowledge that I spoke to the sponsor just now. She is having a medical issue, which is why she's unable to join us here this morning, but I appreciate the Alderwoman from the 12th moving this forward, just to acknowledge that she's been, she's at least asking for, you know, just to confirm that we're speaking with her while we're on the floor here this morning, but is expressing gratitude for the woman, Alderwoman from the 12th, for moving this forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Any further discussion? Aldermen from the 14th.
Madam President, members of the board, I'd like to make a motion that we bank board bill 65.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th, that we am bank board bill number 65. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Board bill 65 is now in bank. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the 12th, you are recognized to close.
Madam President, members of the board, I renew my motion that board bill 65 be perfected.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 12th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 10th, that we perfect board bill number 65. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Cone. Alderman Orion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanye. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Brownie. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderwoman Keys. 14 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the 12th to perfect board bill number 65.
That's the extent of board bills for...
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board.
Report of engrossment.
Board Bill 82, 70, and 15 floor sub.
Third reading and final passage of board bills consent.
Board Bill 82 and Board Bill 70.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the third reading and final passage of board bills on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the final passage of board bills consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we adopt the third reading and final passage of board bills on the consent calendar. Any discussion? Alderwoman from the 7th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I may be added as a cosponsor to 82.
Unfortunately, once a bill is perfected, cosponsors can no longer be added. It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we adopt the third final passage of board bills on the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Cone. Alderman Orion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanye. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Brownie. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys. 14 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the 10th to third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading and final passage of board bills.
Board Bill 15, floor sub, sponsored by Alderman Aldridge, President Green, Alderman Cone, Alderwoman Sanye, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, and Alderwoman Switzer. An ordinance amending Section B of Chapter 26.70.040 of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis to extend, extend the permitted hours of operation of marijuana dispensaries.
Aldermen from the 14th, you are recognized on the third reading and final passage of board bill 15 floor sub.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move to third read and final pass board bill 15 floor sub.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th, that we third read and finally pass board bill 15 floor substitute. Aldermen, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I think we had a robust conversation about this board bill last week. Just to give a kind of update, again, this would just be allowing dispensaries in the City of St. Louis to operate from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. from Saturday to Sunday. We're moving it from 8:00 to 8:00 so that we can also bring in more revenue. St. Louis County is operating from 8:00 to 10:00, and on the other side of the river, they also operate longer. Again, Budget Director Paul Payne said we're expected to bring in just 2.4 million at our current operation, so I think this would be a good way we bring in revenue. I want to thank Cecilia from the President Office for working on this with me, and also Casey from the Mayor's Office for giving some input on how we can make this better, as well as my legislative assistant, Matt Heskem. And with that, I would open up for any questions.
Alderwoman from the 12th.
I'm sorry, Madam President, I don't have a question. I just want to request a roll call. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Aldermen, you are recognized to close.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I close.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th, that we third read and finally pass board bill 15 floor sub. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Cone. Alderman Orion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanye. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Brownie. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alder Woman Clark Hubbard, Alder Woman Keys, Alder Woman Tyus.
Present.
Alder Woman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Aldridge.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer. Alder Woman Keys. 12 aye votes and two voted present.
By your vote, you sustain the motion for the Alderman from the fourteenth to third read and finally pass board bill 15 floor substitute. Report is finally passed and signed by the President.
Board Bill 82, 70, and 15 floor sub.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session affix her signature heretofore and that these may become law.
We have none.
Second reading resolutions, committee reports and adoptions.
We have none.
We can dispense with line items 20 and 21, courtesy resolutions. Alder Woman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the courtesy resolution consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the courtesy resolution consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alder Woman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth, that we adopt the courtesy resolution consent calendar. Any discussion? Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I request to be added to 146, 149, and 151.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved by the Alderman from the fourteenth.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor to 147.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alder Woman from the seventh.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to be added as co-sponsor to 147 and 149.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderman from the ninth.
I could please be added as a co-sponsor to 149 and 151.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved by the Alder Woman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth, that we adopt the courtesy resolution consent calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none. Monday, September 30, 2024, Special Committee on Red Red Tape will meet in the Kennedy Room at 3:00 p.m. Tuesday, October 1st, personnel will have a meeting via webinar at 9:00 a.m. HUDs will have a committee hearing in the Kennedy Room at 11:00 a.m. Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024, Public Infrastructure and Utilities Committee will have a meeting in the Kennedy Room at 3:30 p.m. Personnel via webinar at 11:00 a.m. And Friday, October 4th, 2024, full board meeting in the chambers at 10:00 a.m. That's the extent of the announcements.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Public Safety will have a meeting on Thursday, October 3rd at 2:00 p.m. in the Kennedy Room. We're going to take up board bill 2, board bill 105, and board bill 106. Thank you.
Any further announcements? Alder Woman from the tenth.
Up already, okay. Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. It's that time of month again in the 10th ward where we have our one-on-one that we move around every last Monday of the month. This Monday, it will be at the Hope and Healing Worship Center at 5869 Bartmer, and this month will be dedicated to the CSB process. We have an amazing team of neighborhood improvement specialists who I could absolutely not do my job without in the 10th ward. All of them will be present. They will be giving a presentation on A to Z. We're calling it like a one-on-one class for CSB to make sure their constituents are empowered with their tool and that they know how to use it, and then have us support them if needed. So again, 6:30 to 7:30 on Monday, September 30th, at the Hope and Healing Worship Center under the direction of Superintendent Avery Sanders and Lady Janine Sanders. I also want to note that Tuesday is National Night Out. There's so many amazing events going on across the entire city, so I encourage you to engage in your neighborhood and see where the events are happening so that you can participate and meet new neighbors and have a good time. The weather's supposed to be great. And also on Saturday, there's a big cleanup under the direction of Slaco, Judith Arnold, our neighborhood improvement specialists, forestry, refuges have all been doing pre-work up until getting ready for this, keeping it clean, neighborhood cleanup on Saturday that I'm very excited about and supporting. So make sure you get out and contribute any way you can in your neighborhoods this upcoming week. Thank you.
Need further announcements? Alderman from the fourteenth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I would just ask if we could take a moment of silence for Officer David Lee. I think we all know the story of what happened to Officer Lee this past week. He was a, I heard he was a good officer, and unfortunately, he is no longer with us. I know there will be a resolution, I believe, from the Alderman from the second, and I would encourage all of my colleagues to please sign on and co-sponsor for that. His funeral will be October the 5th. But if we could take a moment of silence for Officer David Lee.
We could please raise, stand and bow our heads for a moment of silence. Any further announcements? Any further announcement? Seeing none, Alder Woman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we excuse the Alder Woman from the 11th for necessary absence and pray that she feels better soon.
It's been moved by the Alder Woman from the tenth, seconded by the Alder Woman from the seventh, that we excuse the Alder Woman from the 11th for necessary absence. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alder Woman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn until Friday, October 4th, 2024, in the Board of Alderman Chambers.
It's been moved by the Alder Woman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the third, that we adjourn until Friday, October 4th, in the Board of Alderman Chambers. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.